Okay, sorry we're late everybody. We were in executive session, we convened at 6 o'clock and we went into executive session for a purpose made confidential by matters of federal law, the Family Education Rights Privacy Act. And we are here now. So I'm the vice president and I'll be leading the meeting, but I'm just doing that as a little bit of a transition because Joe Curdo will be leaving us in a couple of meetings. So I'm kind of leading the meeting with some training wheels on and he's my training wheel. And so if you see him sneaking out the door, somebody speak up. So I don't know, do you have any comments that you'd like to make President Joe Curdo?
We mentioned this at the last meeting that obviously I'm leaving May 19th and somebody because of my appointment will take over basically at that night. And what I think we're all about here is the future and succession planning and seamless leadership. So Jen basically is going to kind of take the helm and assume almost all the duties other than what the law says she can't assume. I'm going to help her through it and we've been meeting all year long on a very regular basis with these conversations intact. So I am totally confident that Jen is going to be a great school board president and I hope the board says that in July at the reorganization meeting. So this is just to kind of get her feet wet so when July kicks in and she officially hopefully takes the position, the district is up and running and there's not that typical dip in what's happening and do we understand protocols and all that kind of stuff. So that's what this is all about. My ego is fine and I don't need the title though it's on the thing. And she's going to do a great job, so that's what we're here for and we're all here to support her. So, thank you Jen.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we move into our first special presentation about the budget.
So if you don't mind, I'm actually going to stand for this because it's very difficult to talk with the presentation behind me. Yep, so good evening everybody. Tonight we're going to have our final discussion and final presentation on our budget and then the board will make the decision if they're ready to adopt the budget as it exists. And tonight the presentation is going to be slightly different than it has been where we've been giving you the information and the recommendations coming from the district about what to include in the budget. And tonight we're going to talk more about the thinking that went behind creating the budget this year and some of the things that we hope to accomplish. So I can tell you for, and having not been here, just looking at the historic kind of representation of what has occurred here, through, and I'm sure everybody knows, all districts in New York State have had difficult times in the last four to five years sending budgets out that would enhance program. And what ended up happening is because of the financial outlook in New York State, not only did we not have budgets that enhanced program, unfortunately we had budgets that actually decreased program. And so this year it is, we took the budget and we looked deeply into it and it was our intent to try to bring back some, a little bit, of what was lost through the many years. And we've been seeing the impact of that, not just in the Haldane School District but throughout New York State. So some of the things that we considered in the creation of our budget this year, the first is what kind of educational enhancements? If we can bring back enhancements to our budget and return positions that were lost because of finances, what should they be? And how do you decide what are the first, second, or third, if that may be the case, things that you bring into the budget and things that you return to the budget? Do you always return things to the budget that were lost or do you look at the needs at that moment in time, which is some of the things that we did do, to determine what position should come back? So that was the first thing. The second thing we did is we looked within the budget and we looked at the things that could be done differently. And if we had funds that were going to outside vendors or outside sources, was it possible to return those funds and bring them back into the Haldane School and to our employees and in some cases new employees that could come in? And could we do it smarter? We knew how much money we had, we knew what we were spending it on. Were we spending it on the place that we could get the best bang for our buck? So that was the second question. The third is looking at the budget and reorganizing it so we got the greatest value for the dollar and we considered that. We looked at some creative solutions, we started meeting with people from different districts, we started looking at out of the box thinking and different ways of providing resources that we hadn't necessarily thought of in the past. We recommended a very specific budget plan, spending plan for next year. We also had some propositions that we've introduced, vehicle propositions including buses and some required vehicles for the district. You know that there is a library proposition that will be on the ballot, it's not ours and it's not something that will necessarily affect the budget, it is a separate type of proposition for the library and the village. And we also talk, we'll talk about very quickly because we hope that that's not a place we ever have to go, to the contingent budget. So the targeted areas, the things, and you've heard us talk about it and I'll talk a little bit more in detail tonight, the different places that we decided to really focus on this year to bring back either some new resources or to enhance the resources that we presently had that could have been lost. The first, something we've been talking about last year and you'll hear us continuing to look at very specific targeted staff development. And the staff development that we are looking at really is kind of an understanding or it is the vision that we're starting to see come from the district itself. We're looking at a number of different options, new types of pedagogical experiences, training, whether it's pedagogy for project-based learning, which you've heard us talk a lot about, whether it's pedagogy or staff development that really helps us create independent learners and release the responsibility and the locus of control for student learning, sometimes to the students instead of being the sage on the stage, serving more as mentors for students in education. You've heard us talking a lot about project-based learning, that's the type of learning that has to occur and as far as our students go, when they're working in projects and they're collaborating. So all of that staff development, the targeted institutes that we had this year and we will continue to have next year, as well as the opportunities or the experiences we can send our teachers out, that's within, that's within. And we have come up with many different ways of doing that. This year, as we will next year, we invited different districts in to our institutes that actually occurred here. They paid to come in, this allowed us to offset some of the costs for the institutes that we were providing for our own teachers, any of the refreshments, any of the materials. And at times the cost of the institute itself was defrayed by outside teachers from different districts. This year, two districts in particular, Garrison and Yorktown Heights took part in our training with us. The second that you'll see here, the educational enhancement, the discover, create, and innovate classes. For those of you who have been following along the changes that we have seen in our makerspace this year, that's been a very successful program. And within the K-8 building, a classroom was redeveloped and reimagined and the kind of instruction and the practices that have happened within that classroom have been rediscovered, reimagined, and recreated. And so we are actually looking at moving a teacher into the makerspace next year and this will be our discover, create, and innovate teacher. It will be a co-teaching experience in some cases where they will create PBL projects, use the makerspace, help to support them in some instances, and in other instances they will actually be teaching courses that create and innovate and allow our students to learn kind of 21st century learning and 21st century skills. We are also looking at a technology integration specialist as we start moving in the PBL, the makerspace, the 21st century learning. We need to have the technological supports and advances that will allow this to happen. There's been a lot of movement and talk about Google Classroom and infusing Google into our school. We also have, we know that with the type of technology infrastructure that we want to have for our students and the type of technology we want to provide, we need more resources and support for this. So the technology integration specialist has also been included in this budget. We are providing, hopefully we'll be providing instructional literacy support. We have, especially at the primary level, we have the need to bring back some literacy support that was in existence in the past. We also are looking at hiring a dual-certified special ed literacy specialist that will be working with the primary grades and possibly the upper grades as well. We'll have to wait and see how that pans out. We are looking at the numbers coming into the kindergarten classroom right now, we're still under the number that we would have to really infuse more than the equitable share into kindergarten, so we're going to have to look and see what the numbers look like at the end of the summer. But it is a dual-certified kindergarten, probably through second grade literacy, special ed support. We also are looking at bringing in an alternative high school program for a couple of periods to really recapture those kids that may be more kinesthetic learners, that want to get involved in CTE, that don't want to wait until their junior year to attend BOSI's, want to have that opportunity right here at home and remain connected to our school. So all of these are the educational enhancements that we considered. We also are looking at the, bringing in an SPO into our district. This would be a K-12 full districts and this is a school peace officer. Unfortunately, at one point we were looking at the difference between a school peace officer and a school resource officer as options and we were trying to decide based on some of the supports that could happen within the district and possibly happen with Putnam County. Putnam County let us know today that they will no longer be supporting the SRO program for new districts, the ones that are presently in contract will be there, but they will continue to support the SPO. It's a less expensive opportunity for the district, it doesn't cost the county any money in order, the district pays for the SPO. And the county was paying for a portion of the SRO. Based on the deficits that have come through insurance, this is a step that they've had to take and so the county executive came by today to talk about that and to share her philosophies and explain why this is happening. So we do have an SPO that remains in our budget. We are also bringing back electives that were lost in science and in home and careers. We will be continuing to talk about other potential electives. We are looking at co-curricular opportunities and we'd like to bring in Model UN, Pathways for Success, and ROR next year. And we also have some contingent coaching funds, so if we need additional coaches through the years because a number of students have signed up for a program that really is greater than one coach can handle, we will have money for that as well. Okay, so how did we figure out how to do this and where did the funds come? And just some of the philosophies, you see the areas that we have at this point embedded in the budget and we just talked about them below. And these areas are ones that we know that we can't, we would have to look at doing things smarter because we couldn't find the finances with a 2% tax cap or tax levy increase or something close to 2% based on the calculations and we've talked about that. We couldn't do all of this without looking elsewhere. So a couple of other things we did, we wanted to, first of all, we knew that spending less is not always feasible, there are times that we have to bring back resources if possible. We have to identify our priorities and there they are. And we have to make the best choices or better choices on where we're spending our money. So that brought us into the smart spending characteristics that we'll talk about. So what examples can we give you? We've talked about the discover, create, and innovate teacher, innovate classes, and the teacher that will be supporting the makerspace. And we're basically looking at offsetting some of the finances from, and we're listing the three areas here, that will, can be redeveloped or repurposed and used to create or to hire this teacher. And so we, BOSI's has, we have, they've been doing our newsletters for a number of years at a substantial cost, so we're talking about having the newsletters actually come in and be created by our kids. And what's better than having a newsletter that tells you and shares the successes of what's happening in Haldane with the kids as the author? So we're looking at doing that, we're looking at moving the website production and the shift in the website into that, the auspices of that teacher. And we're also, tonight, we're going to be having a reduction of force of technology, so technology education certification will now move to a technology innovation specialist or integration specialist. So those were, those moved into this discover, create, and innovate, thank you. Okay, and then the next one, we have our technology integration specialist. Again, we offset some of the budget costs and we moved some of the contractual expenses that we have been paying an outside vendor to bring that in and make that part of the responsibility of our technology integration specialist. And we're also looking at some stipend positions that we can roll into that and again, just redeveloping the way those funds would be spent. Some of the other things that you've probably heard bits and pieces of that are considered within this budget, and I can tell you that they're not fully fleshed out yet. So we know that we're going into these areas, but we don't know the total savings yet. And that will be, that will really be fleshed out as we look at some of the changes and the tuitioning and where people are going to be going to school if we are sending students outside. But there is a new group that is forming, the Hudson River Valley Education Consortium. And it really is a combination of the Putnam Valley, the Garrison, and the Haldane School districts, three small districts that know that they can support each other and probably enhance the programming that we give to our students if we have high-need students or special-need students, that we want to remain in a less restrictive environment, which would be within the districts themselves. We can house and educate those students within. We can do it for less money and in some cases we can actually barter. So the funds where one district may take a tuition child or may have one tuition child go from each place, so there is a bartering experience, that's something we're looking to do. And the first thing we're looking at is special education services for next year in these three districts. Each district will have a specific age and a specific concept for the classrooms that they create. This is the beginning, it's step one, of what we can do with the Hudson River Valley Consortium. Right now, our students in our high school art classes are creating the logo and we're going to have a little competition between the three districts to see what the logo for this new consortium will be. And you'll be hearing hopefully a lot about this. And you have three like-minded districts that very much want to provide the best services that they can for the students that we have in our districts and we can do so kind of under the auspices and the safe wing of all three districts. We're also looking at, as I said before, last year and more of this year, the shared development with like-minded districts as far as staff development. Today, we were at a meeting at BOSI's and they have actually created a co-sir for the first time that will allow this to happen much more naturally. And so there, if you call BOSI's and you ask them, it will be under their guise that some of this information will be sent out, they will advertise, they will collect the funds, and they will help defray the costs and share services with staff development as well. We're also looking at, as we do that, we're also looking at driving BOSI's aid, which we wouldn't be able to in the past. So as we share the staff development or the opportunities, at the same time, the following year, we have about a third of, or maybe 33 cents, 35 cents on the dollar that comes back to the district and BOSI's aid, so that will maximize that as well. We're also looking at and have continued to share transportation with other districts. And again, these are things that we can do within the budget without spending additional money, so we're able to repurpose again. And we're looking at bringing in new experiences and opportunities for the students at Haldane without necessarily spending the money that would come along with this if we can repurpose. Some of the other things that you will hear us talking about and for both this budget and budgets to come, we've had some retiring teachers. We've well utilized the amount, the breakage or the money that we will not be spending for the new teachers and that is infused in the budget. We're using our cafeteria for different things this year and instead of, if we have a luncheon or something that is related to some need for our, from our cafeteria, instead of using outside vendors, we are now using our cafeteria in that sense as well. And this year, Mr. Tuarte and his staff, a number of our staff, they were trained in asbestos abatement, so for the really small jobs and there's very limits, there's limits on what can and cannot be done. We have our own men that are now certified and able to do that. So that's just another example. Other things that you're going to be seeing, or you've probably seen this year, you know that we reorganized space, there were some space problems and facilities problems that occurred over the summer. We were able to take the two modular classrooms that were no longer inhabitable and reorganize space to allow it to happen within the existing space of the multiple buildings in Haldane. We're increasing reserves for future space considerations. We know that there will be a time that we're probably going to have to talk about extending the campus or at least one of the buildings to allow for the things that we need to occur here to occur here well. We are also, and you'll hear more about this, you know that we are about to put some solar panels in the district, where they're going to go and exactly how they're going to go is still under discussion, but if we have solar energy coming in, our cost for electricity and other expenses will decrease. So our budget proposal, we are, this is the recommended budget, as you've been hearing. This was at one point called Budget One because we didn't know what our funds were going to be coming from the state until they released the budget. It is slightly under $23 million, it's a 2.11 budget-to-budget spending increase, 2.72 maximum allowable tax levy increase, which is below the tax cap. And so even though it is slightly above 2, it is still below the tax cap and the other calculations and the other things that needed to be included in the calculation allows us to go to 2.72 and still remain under the tax levy increase of the tax cap. And so at this point, it includes all the enhancements and it's been what we have been talking about that brought us to this time for in the budget development process. We do have the propositions we talked about, we're looking at buying a bus, a van, a maintenance vehicle, which is well over, it's overdue. We have, the proposition will be $180,000. It will be funded through a band, a bond anticipation note, which will help us manage the amount of debt service that the district has until, as we're about to retire some debt, the new debt will come on. So this is something that Ann is very well-versed in and does a great job with, so that will occur. And at this, because of that, we will have no payments until the 16th, 17th school year when some debt retires and new debt comes in. A couple of other propositions that we've talked about, this is the library proposition. Again, this is not within the district itself, we are simply allowing the library to have a vote that will be on with, on our proposition, but it is the Village Library, it's not Haldane. And we have our contingent budget and if, if there were a situation in which the voters voted down our budget twice and there were no votes twice, we would have to go onto an austerity budget, which means we would have to decrease the budget we're proposing today by $490,000. And I think that's about it. Questions, thoughts, comments?
So as the board, we've been living and breathing this budget for a while, but are there any questions from the, from the board?
What we're looking at this evening, I don't think there's anything, is there that's different from what we've discussed at our previous meetings?
No.
Except perhaps the SRO, SPO issue, that seems to be the big one.
Yep, and that really came from Putnam County, that's not something we have any control over.
Yeah, so and with regard to the tax cap, I mean, last year we were significantly under 2%. This year, we're slightly over 2%. I think we can expect that, you know, our target over several years now has been to be at or near 2%. There's going to be that year-to-year fluctuation, but this certainly keeps us right on track with our historical target.
Anything from anybody else on the board?
Just a couple of things. Just the whole SPO, SRO, and I know you just got that information today, so it's kind of breaking news, for lack of a better term. Maybe that we can send a letter to the county and just re-clarify the role of the SPO versus the SRO. I know that job description-wise, there were a few things that the SRO could do that the SPO doesn't necessarily do. Since they're no longer offering this and it's no longer in their mix, maybe there can be some flexibility with job descriptions and such and get what we really want, but at a lower cost and with less exposure to the county. It's kind of a win-win, I see it.
Yep.
But maybe if we can send them a letter and if it comes from the board, maybe that's even better.
And I think that that would be helpful, although I can tell you that in our conversation today, I did feel that there was a greater degree of flexibility based on the scenario. And so I think just reemphasizing what we would like to occur is probably a good step.
Okay, but we'll send them a letter.
Right, send them a letter.
The Hudson River Valley Education Consortium, I think, is a great model going forward. It's kind of what everybody's been talking about, the people that tell schools that you need to consolidate, you need to work together. This is in fact what it's, what it is. And I could just see this expanding to all kinds of areas going forward, once you kind of get the working kinks and everybody kind of gets their arms around each other.
Right.
I think it's a great model and it also has a revenue side to it, which is absolutely fabulous. And just on the transportation proposition, if we could, on our budget page, you know, as people go back and kind of look at all this stuff, if we could just kind of also add something in there about reemphasizing that we are going to get back onto a planning structure of vehicle replacement.
Right.
We got off it due to some budget issues and I think we need to get back on it because that issue just doesn't go away. And just reemphasize that to the public that, you know, this isn't just stopgap, there's a plan going forward and that's really what this is all about.
Right.
And that's important to me. Other than that, I think this, you know, I think you have to look at the tax cap as an amortization over many years. So the formula changes and the governor, whether you like the governor or you don't like the governor, what his intent was is that this is going to change based on formulas. Last year it was as bad as it possibly could and we had to make drastic cuts. This year it isn't as drastic, but the formula is supposed to allow that where you can get some things back. So it's not spending money for the purpose of spending money, it's getting back what we shouldn't have lost in the first place, but still staying under the cap over multiple years. And I think that's important for the public to understand, that, you know, we're within the cap, we have been under the cap before there was a cap, and we probably will be under the cap even when there isn't a cap, if there ever isn't one. And that's just smart public spending and I think that's what we're doing. And just so happens, this number's a little higher than last year, which was catastrophic. So we can't get too used to last year's number because it's an artificial number, that the formula just came that way.
And the presentation tonight really, really laid that out, how it is just smarter spending.
Yep.
It's looking at the budget with fresh eyes, thank you to Dr. Bowers and Ann Dineo for that, and getting creative with it. Yeah.
Yeah, I like it, I think you did a good job.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the public about the budget? Are you good? So just to summarize for anybody in the public who's paying attention, we are going to vote on this tonight, but not until later in the evening. So this is just a presentation of the current budget. And I think that's all for budget. Anybody have anything, anything? Okay. We're going to skip a little bit, just so we can take care of one of our students who has some other obligations. So can we just scoop forward a little bit to the student reports? Yeah? Yeah, so middle school, two students are giving reports, yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steven Ginjulis, and I'm the junior class representative. I'm going to talk about the faculty, students versus faculty basketball game. It's a fundraiser for our junior class trip next year, and it's going to be a $6 entry fee, and $3 for senior citizens 65 and above, and any student, child under three is free. It's going to be a great opportunity for many people to come out and see teachers such as Mrs. Sniffin, Mr. Amm, and other teachers play against the students.
Make them pull out of themselves.
It's 10 students per grade, so there's going to be four quarters, 10 minutes each, and there's five boys and five girls from each grade. And I know there's like 15 teachers, 20 teachers, that are coming out, so it just should be a good experience for everybody. And it's next Friday, May 1st, at 7:00 p.m., so it'd be nice if we can get a big turnout.
Great, thank you.
Defibrillators are all recharge.
Yeah, really? Do you have medical support for that game?
Hi, guys. I'm talking about the guest speaker yesterday, Dr. Mikey, who focused on diversity. And I wasn't actually there, but I heard it was very moving, and it opened a lot of eyes to different issues we have, just as teenagers or people in general, that affected a lot of different age groups. Even the teachers were talking about how, like, you know, it provoked a lot of, or invoked a lot of feelings. And I think that's it. It was a good experience, I think, for everyone, different kind of guest speaker, so, good choice.
Great, okay, thank you.
My daughter was at the, and she raved about it last night. And she's a tough critic. And she really raved about it, said it was absolutely fabulous.
It was, it was fabulous.
And just, she kept going on and on about it, and it was great, good to hear, so.
Shout out to the foundation of the PTA for providing that for us to happen.
Great.
It was life-changing.
It was wonderful.
And we're going to thank the PTA and Haldane School Foundation for providing the funds to make that event happen. Okay, good, so then we're going back up into our agenda, and we're going to the superintendent's report, so I'll hand it over to Dr. Bowers.
Okay, and I will share some dates with you. There are a lot of dates that are coming up, and actually, I'm going to be adding a couple. I just want to remind all the residents of our wonderful community that the Haldane School Foundation will be hosting the Taste of the Valley this Saturday evening at Glenwood. If you haven't been there, it's a very special evening, I believe it starts at 6:30. So it's worth the time. I would also like to tell you about another presentation that will occur on both May 6th and 7th. The PTA is also sponsoring, and we are inviting the Garrison parents as well, and hopefully the Garrison PTA will be in partnership, to hear John Halligan. If you've ever heard Ryan's story, it's about a middle school student who unfortunately took his own life because of cyberbullying. John Halligan, his father, has been on the circuit and really been talking to parents about safety precautions and understanding your children, and knowing the kinds of things that they contend with on a day-to-day basis. And so, John Halligan will be here to meet with parents the evening of May 6th. He will be presenting to our students on May 7th. And so, if anybody would like to come and hear Mr. Halligan and hear his experience and the things he has learned as he's gone through many, many years of talking to people across the United States about cyber safety, we invite you to join at 7 o'clock, Brent?
Yes.
7 o'clock on the 6th of May for the parents. Tuesday, May 5th, is the Board of Education business meeting, and we will, it is a public hearing on the, well, a public hearing on the budget, sorry, public hearing on the budget, presented in a three-component format as required by the state. The final budget document will be available to the public, and there will be tenure recommendations that evening. Wednesday, May 6th, the Board of Education meeting will begin 5:30 in the Home and Careers. They will convene into executive session, and no action will be taken at this meeting. On Tuesday, May 12th, the Board of Education will meet at 7 o'clock, Home and Careers, and the Board of Ed will convene into executive session to talk about the employment history of a particular individual. No action will be taken at that meeting. Thursday, May 14th, 4 to 8, voter registration in the K-8 Building, Elementary-Middle School Building. May 19th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., will be the 15-16 Annual District Meeting and Budget Vote and Trustee Election. Tuesday, May 19th, at 6:30, is the Night of the Rising Stars in the Auditorium, and it's being sponsored by the Haldane Booster Club. And Tuesday, the 26th, at 7 o'clock, the strategic plan presentation will be made to the Board of Education right here. So we have a lot of dates for you to remember. The other thing that I would like to comment on, there has been so much publicity in the newspaper and on the news about the test refusals. I know that there have been a few people that have asked us Haldane's position on the testing and the opting out, or what is formally called the refusals. And it is our, we are going to provide the tests for the students that choose to take them. We certainly are not going to get in between the family decisions. They will be available, we will provide an alternate setting and some quiet reading time for our students who choose not to take the test. We had a number of students in the 50s that did not take the ELA, will probably be slightly higher when we begin the math test tomorrow. We actually had more, some additional students choose to refuse the math test, but we actually had some students that took the ELA that did not take the ELA, that will take the math. So it is a political situation, it is out there, it's happening throughout New York State, and, you know, we would like to remain as neutral and as apolitical in this situation as possible. So that's basically what you're going to be hearing about at the end of this week as well. Yes?
Could we get some clarification on the impact of funding to districts based on numbers? Is that, you know, is there an impact?
Well, it's my understanding that the impact, if there is one, will come after three years that a district has less than 95% participation. And from what we have been hearing, for districts that receive Title I funds, which are federal funds, there is a portion of the Title I funds that may be repurposed for other things if you have less than 95% participation for three years. And there is, at this point, there's still some questions, because it would be a large percentage of districts that will remain under the 95% for multiple years, but at this point, that's what we understand. We also know that if it is, if we are under 95% for three years running, there may be some additional requirements placed on the district, and there may be, there would have to be an action plan that is created by the district. And right now, there's a lot of question marks, there continues to be more changeover at the State Education Department. As you know, the commissioner has left. At this point, the deputy commissioner is about to leave to take a superintendency in a different district. So the leadership within the State Education Department has changed dramatically. So we're not sure where that's going, there are a lot of big question marks, there are a lot of mandates that still have not been clarified by the State Education Department, so we'll see where it goes. But as far as this year, we do not believe that there will be any impact.
I read somewhere, we are a reward school.
Yes.
Correct?
We were.
We were.
We were a reward school.
We were, last year.
Last year.
And not considered one this year. That's another impact. It may not be, it could be financial, it may not be financial. If you are under 95%, you are no longer eligible for reward school status. That also means that there are certain grants that are available only to reward schools that we're not eligible to look at or to be part of.
Have we participated in them in the past?
One, yep.
Yes, I've shared.
Oh, that's the one that, helping the other school out, that, the mentoring to the other school?
Right.
That was through the reward school.
I secured our LLI program as well as math tier-two support.
Right, and it's, there was a $50,000 grant that the school received, making Brent and Julia work really hard for that $50,000, but we would not be eligible to reapply for that type of grant.
So we got it, we used it, we just can't reapply for it
Correct.
In the future, unless something changes.
It was the result of our standing as a reward school in 1314. We are, because of our participation on last year's state assessment that fell under 95%, we are not on the reward school list this year. We will not be on that list next year, because we've already fallen below the necessary 95% representation.
So that's a real consequence versus some of the other consequences, which are all speculative, because nobody knows.
Right.
This is a real one. Okay.
Okay, that's it. Okay. So we're going to move into the information reports. We've done the student representatives, so now we're moving into Mr. Tarrington.
Okay, I'll be brief. I just want to put a quick plug in for our approaching 5th Grade Arts Alive Day. We had our first opportunity to invite our local artists in to do workshops last year with our 5th grade students. It was quite a success. I've met with Katie Bissinger, Chair of the Fine Arts Booster Club. We're in the process of volunteering, of soliciting volunteers, so again, anyone in the community with a background, president daily in the arts, we welcome your participation on May 29th to do a workshop with our 5th grade students. So that is the arts, music, writing, performance, dance, et cetera. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I do, I'm going to focus mostly on the honors acknowledgment section, but I do want to highlight, if you look at 2G, this year, thanks to, I guess, Katie Bissinger, I did some negotiating, or maybe she was approached as our Arts Booster Chair, but Hudson Valley Shakespeare will be doing that work. It's two days of work, a performance on the 5th and workshops on the 4th, for no cost to the district. So we're very, very grateful for that. In the past, the foundation has helped us out with that arrangement, but this year, I'm not really sure why, it's being offered at costs, or, I mean, at no cost. So thank you to our neighbor Hudson Valley Shakespeare for making that possible. And honors acknowledgements, I'd like to thank Janine and Kevin Ginjulis for sponsoring as West Point parents, the 2015 Dwight D. Eisenhower Leadership Award, and we're awarding that to junior Marissa DiPaolo. So congratulations, Marissa. There's a very large reception and presentation and keynote over at West Point, and Marissa will be participating in that, and that's because one of our alumni is there at West Point, so we're proud of him. I'm also proud to announce the 2015, class of 2015 valedictorian is Julia Olson and salutatorian Wiley McDonald. Those students are extremely well-deserving, as are a lot of our top-tier students who work really, really hard, and those folks will be attending a dinner with Dr. Bowers and myself and Jenner Joe down in Tarrytown later in the month. So congratulations, Julian Wiley. And 2015 Putnam County Youth Award recipient, I want to thank Mr. Cunningham for representing us there last Friday night, or maybe it was two weeks ago, sorry, time flies. Jonathan Schwarzwelder is a Haldane recipient of a youth award. It's generally built around community service efforts and accomplishments in that area. John's very well-deserving and hard-working as well. And this year, you know, we, this is really a banner year for us in the Putnam County Arts Council, overall best-in-show. In my years here, it's the first best-in-show that I can recall. Wiley Thornquist achieved that distinction, and Benny Geithner achieved first place for her work, and then Henry Duel got an honorable mention up to Putnam County Arts Council. So a lot of accolades you see from the report, it's a very busy month and getting busier, so, thanks a lot.
So I'll follow Mr. Amm's exciting announcements about our students with a not-so-exciting announcement about a Medicaid audit that was held on April 14th. I'd like to say that it was a fun-filled day, but it was a day spent poring over papers, but I'm pleased to share that we received very high marks from the people from the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center that came. They had two suggestions for us, for the future, but neither of them, they felt if the state came in to audit us directly would impact any of our claims. So I'd particularly like to thank Kim Patton-Lar for all the work she does to keep that well-organized.
Good evening. Just a quick, spring right now is kind of crazy for our athletic team, so make sure you're paying attention to our website, because we're updating it hourly, it feels like, but a lot of changes, so hopefully we're able to get some things going this week and for the rest of the season. There's only about three or four weeks left, believe it or not. And this Friday night, the Booster Club is having a, they're calling it, it's kind of, it's called a recognition dinner, something that came up this year. They're recognizing someone that's been here a long time, John Morante, everybody knows him as Jig 'Em. So that's going to be Friday night over at the Conic Outdoor Education Center at 8:00. So it's going to be a good night, okay?
I would just like to thank my maintenance staff for preparing all the fields and getting everything ready outside this year. Got the baseball fields looking good, we got a lacrosse area cleaned up pretty good. So I'd like to thank Tony Stronconi, the main guy, for all this. Jeff Palace was a big help, and as was Gary Van Assel. The main thing I want to talk about is, for a while, we've been talking about getting better lighting into the stairways over at the high school, as, I don't know if anybody's really ever paid attention, but there's some real high lighting up there, and it's not LED lighting, so they go out frequently. And it's, you really can't get to it without putting a lift up about, you know, 30 feet. So what we decided to finally do is put some LEDs lightings, like panels, there's four of them around each side, which we can get to with a ladder pretty easily. It was recommended that we buy some new LED fixtures. However, they were almost $1,000 bucks each, and there was four on each side, that would have been $8,000. So our own Michael Zikatis put two and two together, and he just rebuilt these fixtures, left the existing fixtures, put some new ballast in there, some LED lights, which will be good for years now, at a cost of $1,200, which is much better than $8,000. And we got the same result. So I'd like to thank him also, and that's it.
Are there any questions for our administrators? Anybody, public, yep?
Turn those shoes down.
Hand down.
You're getting tough questions now. Question on the, going back to the test refusals, so does that make it two years now? Because Brent said something about last year, so this is working on our second, so we're in our second year. Okay, and what was the number? You said over 50?
I believe it was 55 or 58.
58, 9 for ELA. We're presently at 61 for math, but we won't have an official number until
Until tomorrow.
Until early, the end of the year.
Is that 3 through 8?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good, so I think our administrators are free to sneak out if you want to.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're moving into the Arts Booster Club Committee minutes. Do we have to motion? What do we do without these?
No.
Do we just say? Okay, great, thanks to Arts Booster Club for your great minutes. Okay, going into consent agenda for the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on April 7th, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda, financial.
Motion.
All second? Is there any discussion? We're good? All those in favor? Consent agenda, personnel, can I Consent agenda personnel, can I have a motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Moving into unfinished business.
Okay, there are a couple of things that we would like to share. The communities, the Care Coalition, the Community Drug Forum is this Thursday at April 23rd at 7:00 PM at St. Christopher's Inn in Garrison. So if anybody would like to see, to join us at that point, please make your way there. Next, the next monthly meeting is on April 29th at 3:00 at the North Highlands Fire Company. There, we have a number of trustee candidates. Julia?
Yes. Yes, this, this election, we have six candidates who are vying for three open seats. Two of the seats are three-year terms. And one of, the one seat, the other seat, I should say, is the unexpired seat that was previously held by Gillian Thorpe, is currently being held by Mr. Curdo by appointment. And it commences actually right after the budget vote, and all the votes are counted. So the way it works is, the two candidates who receive the highest number of votes would be elected to the two, three-year terms. The third highest vote-getter would be elected to the unexpired term of Gillian's. And this is where it gets a little bit tricky. And Mr. Schwartz may remember, because I think this happened to you before, where because you still, if it turns out that you are the candidate who receives the third highest number of votes, you would have to resign and be sworn in to fill the term, the unexpired term through the end of 2016. The board at that point could decide to elect, or to appoint, I should say, someone to fill the remainder of trustee Schwartz's unexpired term, the five or six weeks or so before the end of the school year. The, the other issue is, of course, that President Curdo would be off the board at this point. And Vice President Daley assumes the duties of the, of the president as per board policy.
Thanks, Julia. Are there any questions about that from the board? Is that pretty clear for everybody?
So two three-year terms and then one one-year term?
Yeah, one year and a few weeks.
Okay.
So what we need to decide as a board is, if the hypothetical situation happens where Evan is the lowest, the third, the third highest, I should say, vote-getter, who would we want to appoint during that five or six weeks to fill Evan's?
The remainder of his.
The remainder of Evan's term. One suggestion is to appoint the highest vote-getter of the three. You know, or, or, but we can decide to do whatever we want to do.
Oh, I see.
Do you see? Because somebody's gotta, so say Evan kinda slides over and takes Joe's seat, somebody's gotta take Evan's seat.
Appoint the highest of the two.
Right.
Well, are we actually required to appoint somebody? Or we can just decide to have a vacant seat for the remainder of the year?
Actually, the attorney didn't say that you had to.
I think you can leave it open.
Yeah.
So I think you can just operate with four.
So we could, so, okay, so the board needs to decide if we want to, in that situation, if we prefer to operate as four, if we prefer to appoint somebody in for those few weeks, and if we decide to appoint somebody in, who do we appoint in? So we need to just kinda mull that over. We don't decide that right now. And then the other thing we need to decide is, if I'm assuming the lead role for those five to six weeks, if I get the flu and can't be here, who's the next person in charge? Do we want to take a moment to just decide who's the next person in charge? We don't have to give them a title necessarily.
Well, could we appoint a vice president at that time?
I think I'm still technically vice president.
Oh, is that what it is? And we have no president?
We have no president. I'm the, I'm acting as president, but I'm, my title is vice president. So do we, as a group, want to decide on like a next-in-charge person on the Justin case? We, you know, we don't have to just do that, decide that right now. It's just something. So those two things, I think, we have to figure out at some point between now and May 19th.
Well, if I'm correct, I think I'm the only person other than you that's actually guaranteed to be here.
That's right.
You would, you, you will be here one way or the other.
I'm here one way or the other, right.
Okay.
It's probably a good idea, just in case of an emergency, you've got someone who you know can just kinda step in. Yeah, John's gonna-
Oh, yeah, he's here too. Oh, so all three of you are technically. So maybe we can just kinda consider our options and decide another time.
Julia, can you-
Drink water and stay away from babies.
Julia, can you read the six names who submitted their petitions by the deadline, who will appear on the ballot? The six people should be commended for first raising their hand and willing to do this because it is a huge responsibility. So if you could give the names, that would be great. And I know there's a couple of them here.
Yes, I'm happy to read the names. They're in the order as they will be listed on the ballot. We drew lots this morning in the district office. Margaret Parr, Evan Schwartz, Margaret Peggy Clements, Charles Huestis III, Corin Reacher, Corey, and Sarah Elizabeth Carnaval.
And do you want to just talk about the meet the candidates?
Yes, oh, sorry, I forgot that. And the PTA is sponsoring a meet the candidates night on Wednesday, May 13th, 7:00 PM in the auditorium.
So that's a great opportunity to hear from these candidates and hear their points of view and get to know them. So please attend if you can.
And I spoke with the PCNR yesterday, and they, she said that she's gonna be reaching out to all the candidates to do an article for all the candidates that gets published. Was that who I spoke? Kimberly, okay, right.
I think Phil's Townhead Info does that as well. I think both, so there's an opportunity for people.
Did you give that? She said she would get that information from, from you when I spoke to Kimberly.
Well, between Linda and I, yeah, we've been, we've been trying to share the information with the press.
Typically, we also include something from each in the budget newsletter, if I recall, each of the candidates.
I don't remember doing that.
No?
I, I would have to-
I always thought we did. It was just a little, I mean, it was always one or two people. But I always thought there was just something that gave their names and something simple.
Each candidate was submitted something, right? I don't know if they, everyone did. It was part of the packet.
Yeah, I'd have to review to see if they all, if I got something from everyone.
And six people is amazing. I don't ever recall in my many years of having that many people running. That's, that's impressive that people are willing to make that commitment.
Yes, it is.
You guys that are here, thank you. That's a big thank you.
Okay, moving on to Monolith Solar.
So for those of you who were here last, at the last meeting, or watched the last meeting, we had a presentation from Monolith Solar.
Actually, do you want to just pause? I think we have to change the tape. Maybe we should change and then do-
Fine.
Monolith Solar.
Okay.
Okay, Monolith Solar, take two.
Okay, so for those of you who watched the, the last meeting, Monolith Solar came and presented to us some options for the approved solar panels to be placed somewhere in the district. And the State Education Department has approved the original plan, which is to put the solar panels on top of three buildings within the district. Monolith suggested other options, and they, they want, at this point, for us to consider remote metering, which means that solar fields could potentially be built. The solar fields would allow for more efficiency. They could be, the remote monitoring could allow them to be moved throughout the, the field at different angles to collect more sunlight, and there is a greater return on the kilowatt hour financially for the district. Originally, they were planning on offering a piece of land in, in the Poughkeepsie area, and then they found out that the State Education Department would require that that would be, or needs to be within the district boundaries. So they are looking at the potential of buying a piece of land that could house a solar field. And within the last week to two weeks, we've had a number of conversations about the land that the district has on the market, or at least a portion of the land that is related to James Pond in that area. And we do have surveys that have different components of the land segmented. We would have to look at whether or not the, the topography of the land would be appropriate. I know at this point, they have copies of the topographic maps, and they have copies of the, the land itself, Monolith. So they're looking into that, and we will see whether or not it is an option. And if it is an option, then we'll have to talk about whether we're gonna parcel the land off, if this is something that the district wants to do, if we want to sell a component of it to Monolith, and that will be further conversations. Or do we just want to go into the plan that was originally set by the State Education Department? So that's something that we'll continue to speak on, you know, within the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, we'll have an idea of where we're gonna go, or what the potential least is. And so I'll keep you updated.
Are there any questions? I don't feel like we've gotten any kind of new information yet to have questions about, but is there, does anyone have anything they want to ask? We're good. Okay, is there any communication from the public? All right. So we're moving into new business. The resignation of the secondary mathematics teacher, Mr. Brandon Milanovich. Is there anything you want to reiterate about that? Or do we, I have to motion first, right? Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
So can we have some discussion about that? Would you like to just reiterate your thoughts?
Sure. Brandon is, he's been accepted into a doctoral program and has decided to take the plunge. So we thank him for his time with us, and he's gonna be at Columbia, and he will be Dr. Milanovich, and we wish him well.
And we're not taking away the math teacher position, we're just changing the teacher.
Correct. We will be hiring into the position, yes.
Great. Does Julia need to read anything about that, or do we just accept it?
Want me to read the recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. The recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the letter from Mr. Brandon Milanovich indicating his intent to resign from his position as secondary mathematics teacher effective Janu-, excuse me, June 30th, 2015. Thanks him for his service to the district and wishes him well in his future endeavors.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, number two, approval of a .6 reduction within the certification area of technology education for 2015 to 16. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to point out that this is, we're taking away a part-time technology teacher in order to make a full-time technology integration specialist.
Right, and it's two different certification areas. It'll be two different tenure areas. And so we have to reduce this position to allow for the other.
Great. All those in favor? Okay, number three, approval to adopt the 2015-16 school budget and propositions. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All right.
Good job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The approval of the property tax report card for 2015-16, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there anything different in the format of the property this year? I know a couple of years ago, they made some changes.
They did make a couple of changes.
Nothing substantial?
Nothing substantial. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I had a note that this might've needed to be a roll call. Is that true for the budget, or is what we did just fine?
The BOSI's budget?
No, what we just did. That's all fine? For our-
Number three, our budget.
For our budget?
Our budget.
No roll call?
That's just a regular yeay.
Just a regular yeay, nae. We're good?
Okay.
Okay.
And we're 5-0 on that one, right?
Yep, 5-0.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, approval of the resolution, Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's budget, 2015 to 16. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, wait, was she supposed to read the? Julia, should you read the resolution?
Why don't I just read it so that it'll go into the-
Yeah, great, thanks.
The recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution. Whereas the Board of Cooperative Educational Services of Putnam Northern Westchester County here in After BOSI's has proposed its tentative administrative budget for the 2015-2016 school year. It's July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. Now therefore be it resolved that the BOSI's tentative budget for the 2015-2016 school year in the amount of $8,705,000 be and hereby is approved by the board.
So we're good with theirs? Okay. The, now we're moving into the vote on the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's trustee candidates. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Great. So any discussion about this? I don't know if anybody has any feelings. We thought maybe we would just kind of talk it out and see if there's anybody who has some strong feelings in one direction or another. We don't really necessarily know all these people. But we have voted in the past for candidate number four, Douglas Glickert of Peak Skill. He's the one we supported last time around. Catherine Lilburn, Lilburn. Joe said he knows her, but she is from the Garrison area, so, and she's an incumbent. And then the other two seem to be the new, the new candidates. One, Karen Conti, seems to be, just looking at her resume, seems to be very experienced with school board and teacher role. And Carolyn Aversano seems less experienced with that, but more experienced with legislative advocacy and technology support. Personally, I'm leaning towards her because I think legislative advocacy is something that sounds like our organizations could use. I don't know if anyone has any other thoughts they want to share.
Are we making, we have to make a decision tonight?
We do.
Yeah. I mean, I would highly recommend Catherine Lilburn from Garrison. I know her personally and from her work in Garrison. Doug Glickert, we recommended once before, seems excellent. So I would definitely say those two, and I would be more than happy to go on your recommendation for the third person, Carolyn Aversano.
Aversano.
So that's my thoughts.
John? Yeah? Evan?
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to choose people so and so. I mean, Garrison is, is our district, not our district, but, so, yeah. I guess, one of those two, you're-
Yeah.
I'll make it unanimous.
Okay. All right, so it looks, it sounds like we are unanimous. We are voting for Carolyn Aversano, Catherine Lilburn, and Douglas Glickert. And then maybe Julia, should you read the recommended action, and then we can do the official?
The recommended action is that the Board of Education casts a vote to fill the three vacancies on the Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the period of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018, from the following four candidates. One, Karen Conti of South Salem, New York. Two, Carolyn Aversano from North Salem, New York. Three, Catherine Lilburn from Garrison, New York. And four, Douglas Glickert from Peak Skill, New York. And I guess, I mean, I guess at this point, I'd just say that, that the board has cast its three votes for Carolyn Aversano, Catherine Lilburn, and Douglas Glickert.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
Okay, now we've added something into the agenda based on our executive session that we had earlier this evening. We've come to a decision on a matter, that resolution that Julia will read for us.
Okay. I start from the be it resolved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Number two.
Right, okay. Be it resolved that the board hereby adopts the findings of fact and modifies the penalty determination of the superintendent of schools dated April 7, 2015 regarding student number 042115. And be it further resolved that the board president is hereby authorized to sign the board determination on- authorized to sign the board determination on behalf of the Board of Education, and be it further resolved that the board clerk is hereby directed to mail the board determination to the students' parents."
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second, I'll second it. Any further discussion from the board? Not that we can really do any of that discussion in public anyways. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now I'd like to see if there's any communication from the public. Any questions? Good. So before we adjourn, we are going to, I'm going to make a motion to go back into executive session for the purposes made confidential by matters of federal law, the Family Education Rights Privacy Act.
Before you do that, can I just have two quick things?
Yes.
One, just for the, for the May 5th meeting, I have something at work. I should be at the meeting, but I do not think I will get here by the 7:00 PM start. So maybe we could touch base before we set the agenda to see if there's anything pressing that maybe we can move it towards the end.
And Joe won't be here for that meeting either.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, so that means it's just going to be the three at the start.
So the three of us just need to make sure we're here.
Okay.
And it's a business meeting, I don't think there's anything-
At the presentation of the budget, so, all right, but I, I mean, I should be here, maybe I'll coordinate with you, just look at the, once the agenda, and see if we have to move anything.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Thank you.
And then the second thing is, I just wanted to just make a comment. There was a, my son took piano lessons from Kathy Fitzgerald, who lived right around the corner, and she gave piano lessons to many, many Haldane students over the year, and she passed away last month. So, just wanted to send, I guess, on behalf of the board, condolences to the family.
Certainly, that's used to me, and my son took piano lessons with her, too.
Yeah.
I think everybody did at some point, whoever took piano, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know her.
So, and her, just in the letter that her husband sent, he asked that, to respect their privacy with no phone calls. So if anyone was thinking of calling, he's asked to respect their privacy and no phone calls.
Do you have an address that we could send a card?
I do. I'll email it when I get home.
Okay, I'll send a little card from the board.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm making a motion to go back into executive session.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, back there we go. We won't be coming back here, so, we're done.
Don't wait.
Don't wait for us.